All right. Good evening. I called this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is the 27th, 2023, and it's 7:12 PM. Would the clerk call the room, please?
Councilman Refai?
Present.
Councilman Musa?
Present.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yeah, present.
But Councilman Choudhary and Councilman Hassan are not present. Mr. Mayor, we have four.
Thank you. Rise for the political leaders. I was the chairman of the city. A two-year-old politician stands on a nation on our behalf in this world, supporting justice for all. Thank you. Do we have any community announcements?
Hello, Mr. Chair. Sadly, our city attorney, Oday, was unable to attend tonight's meeting. And that's because his father-in-law passed away today. So my sincere condolences to him, his wife, his family, and friends. So he may rest in peace.
Mr. Mayor, in lieu of what councilmen said, we have Mr. Allen graciously filling in for our city attorney in a pinch. Most people here know him. In addition to that, tomorrow is the Sarah Garrett Monument dedication at 5:00 PM at Sarah Garrett Park. Hopefully, everyone can attend. I expect it to be about an hour. Should be a nice commencement for the monument.
Thank you. Any more announcements?
I was looking at Lynn, but she didn't have any.
She didn't have any. All right, so we move to proclamations, affirmations, and presentations. And we have proclamation recognizing the 28th anniversary of the genocide in the United Nations' protected area of Serbenica.
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 I just had to say 28th anniversary, we started.
You want to?
Sure. Recognizing the 28th anniversary of the genocide in the United Nations' protected area of Serbenica. Whereas both the United States Senate and the United States House of Representatives passed resolutions acknowledging the genocide that the Serbian forces perpetrated in Serbenica and all of Bosnia from 1992 to 1995. And whereas July 11th, 2023, is commemorated as the 28th anniversary of the Serbenica massacre, in which at least 8,372 innocent Bosnian civilians were summarily executed and 30,000 were expelled from their homes in the worst atrocity in Europe since the Holocaust. And whereas this anniversary raises awareness of the tragic suffering of the Bosnian people and honors and remembers those who died as a result of the policies of the ethnic cleansing and aggression. And whereas the city of Hamtramck recognizes the importance of this event to bring closure for the Bosnian people through justice and truth. Now, therefore, I, Amr Gadda, mayor of Hamtramck, do hereby proclaim July 11th as Serbenica Remembrance Day and proclaim the week of July 11th, 2023, as the Bosnian and Herzegovina Tribute Week in Hamtramck, and call upon all citizens to work towards ending the cycle of violence and promoting peaceful coexistence amongst all. Signed, Amr Gadda.
Do you have any additions or additions to the agenda? Then we will move to the public call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start with the emails first. I have Megan Navoy. Hello, I am a business owner in Hamtramck, and I am deeply concerned about the anti-LGBTQ rhetoric that is being encouraged by the city. I am opening a retail store and art space in Hamtramck, and my business is welcoming and accepting of all people. I do not want my business to be operating in a place that encourages homophobia via the city's banning of hanging the Pride flag, especially during Pride Month. The city of Hamtramck is a wonderful, diverse place, and we need to encourage acceptance and cohabitation amongst people with different beliefs, not be judgmental, and encourage hatred and bigotry. I'm against the so-called neutrality and urge the city to reconsider and appeal the latest resolution. Thank you for taking the time to read this email. Best, Megan Navoy. Eric Wellsby. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Eric Wellsby, and I am the advocacy director of Detroit Disability Power. I'm contacting you today regarding the proposed changes to public comment. Detroit Disability Power has been approached by multiple Hamtramck residents who have expressed serious concerns about how the proposed public comment changes will impact people with disabilities and their ability to have their voice heard by this council. The changes, as currently proposed, will create excessive barriers for people with disabilities, senior citizens, and others through the elimination of the option to provide public comment via email. For those with mobility issues or who may be temporarily permanently immobilized, hand-delivering their comments to the clerk is not an option, and finding someone else to deliver the comments on their behalf may not be practical. Utilizing a carrier service may not be an option for many either. Carrier letters can take anywhere from one to three business days to reach to the destination, depending on when and where the letter is sent from the city. This allows a very limited window for residents to review the council meeting agenda, prepare their comments, and get it posted in time for it to arrive before the public comment submission deadline. In addition, couriers like the United States Postal Service do not operate on Sundays or holidays, potentially further limiting a resident's time and ability to have their comments delivered before the deadline. Finally, utilizing a carrier service may require a resident to leave their home and send their letter or to purchase appropriate postage, both of which may not be an option for some residents with disabilities. In short, the proposed changes will exclude many disabled Hamtramck residents from discussing important issues with their city council. If enacted, these changes will result in the silencing of many disabled voices in the city. These changes would send a message to residents that disabled people in Hamtramck are not a priority for this council and that it is acceptable for them to be marginalized and excluded from the decision-making of city elected officials. Detroit Disability Power and our members in Hamtramck strongly urge you to vote against the proposed changes to public comment. Thank you. Michael Marcus. When I realize that copper lines may be more expensive, plastic water lines represent potential hazards for our entire community, particularly if the types of plastic are not explicitly listed in the amendment. Many types of plastic have particular risks. Please see the link below. He did submit a link. Continues to say, "I do not protest the use of all plastic." And given what is shown in the article at the link, you can easily see how the amendment can be adjusted to avoid the possibility of harming both our citizens and the water supply. This is an easy opportunity to fix legislation without any real inconvenience. George Elkind. My public comment for council tonight. My name is George. As a Hamtramck homeowner and taxpayer, I'd like to voice my opposition to proposal 2385, which would dramatically restrict the ability of residents and community stakeholders to make their voices heard. Council is meant to represent the community's needs and should thus be open to hearing their views. Mandating that people bring physical copies of written comments to City Hall by 4:00 PM is an egregious requirement in this day and age for civic participation, and on top of imposing an undue burden on community members with disabilities makes it hard for people who simply work typical hours to participate in key government processes. Limiting discussion of resolutions to five minutes per council member also curbs the ability for officials to govern effectively and is likely to result in rash decision-making and undercooked proposals, a very bad idea. Those who resent the burdens of civic work and who do not want to put in time to serve their constituents have the option to simply not run for office. Hearing the voices and objections of those one represents is absolutely at the heart of democratic process. This proposal stands squarely in the way of keeping the city's modes of governance open and participatory. I ask members of this council to vote no on the resolution, which would damage our city and community in many, in very clear ways. One of the most important aspects of your job is to listen. Thank you. Julia Sosin. My name is Julia Sosin, a Hamtramck resident. I am commenting in opposition to the proposed changes to council meeting rules that would prohibit emailed comments. I'm in favor of emailed comments because they increase participation in democracy. They are extremely convenient for me, a busy working mom, but while hypothetically could attend a meeting in person, there are many more in Hamtramck for whom that simply is not an option. Same with hand-delivered comments. And mail-in comments require advanced knowledge of agenda items so they can comment so that any comments can arrive on time. Soran Hodder. Good morning. I just wanted to make some follow-up comments, both regarding 202382 passing as well as the intent to add an end to emailed comments to the agenda. First, I'll address 2382 passing, as I think some further clarifications will make my disagreement with ending emailed comments make more sense. I am 100% disabled vet with both physical and mental disabilities as a result of my service, a service that I did proudly and with honor. In my previous comments regarding to the proposal in intent of 2382, I didn't mention my service because I generally don't think that it should be necessary to mention. We are all Americans, and we are all doing our best for our communities that we call home. What I think is being missed by the current city council is the knock-on effects, as discussed both at the recent DDA meetings as well as what was brought up current by the city council members in the recent city council meeting. My service was meant to support and uplift all members of our country. I've served proudly next to Muslims, next to atheists, next to people from the LGBT+ community, and next to people from all walks of life. This includes both their right to protest and refuse to stand for the National Anthem as well as flying flags of representation. As I stated in my previous comment, representation goes far beyond what is present in the existence of the national flag. Up until 2011, LGBT individuals couldn't serve honorably in the military. Did the flag represent them while they had to hide who they were? Please, I beg of you to reconsider this line of thinking and remember that I and many other veterans fought for what friends of mine have died for. It wasn't so that the nation with the diversity of America would have cities begin banning flags of representation. There was also a lot of talk about bigotry not existing before the Pride flag was flown. There was a lot of talk about having to respect religious beliefs of those who disagree with the existence of LGBT+ people. I think this is a dangerous line of thinking and blatantly stating that that was a motivating factor despite the initial words to the contrary from the mayor saying that the resolution did not target LGBT+ Pride flags. The words of both the sponsor and other council members were in direct contrast with that initial response. I would encourage the city council, I would encourage that the city council considers these potential issues, as I hope they reconsider 2382. Let me be clear, I am a veteran. I am absolutely disappointed in your decision to only fly the U.S. flag under the guise and that it represents all people of the city equally, and I oppose the comments of people using my status as a veteran to argue for that stance. This brings me to my concerns regarding ending email comments. I struggle with depression, anxiety, PTSD, and physical ailments as a result of my military service. It is not always possible for me to come in person to city council meetings and give comments. I'm not alone in these difficulties with appearing before the city council to deliver statements in person. There are so many, as seen in the previous city council meeting, who rely on being able to email comments in order for their voice to be heard. Banning emails at this point is a direct counter to the existence of people with disabilities in Hamtramck community. It also opens Hamtramck up to the possibility of falling out of compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act by removing this reasonable accommodation for people with disabilities. Thank you again for reading and considering this. This is Matthew Isapi, I believe it's pronounced. Hello, city council and mayor. I'm deliberately sending an email comment to make a specific point. This method of delivering feedback to council is necessary for those who are disabled and are working while council meetings are happening. Will you be posting the council agenda two days earlier so people actually have a reasonable time to mail in comments? As clear as day, the incentive for removing emailed comments is because of the 123 emails you received last session on the resolution. I see no issue in why there were so many. Hamtramck was on national news and now has a damaged reputation because of the resolution approved last session, and residents foresaw that and beg to reconsider it. We are an embarrassment now, and people are afraid of stepping into the city because now people are aware of the increased harassment and vandalism towards LGBTQ individuals and property. I didn't like it when your constituents overwhelmingly made their voices heard. You didn't like it when your constituents overwhelmingly made their voice heard, to the point where we had to have someone call names out into the halls so people could speak their minds last session. It's now abundantly clear to myself and other Hamtramck residents that you are more focused on removing as many public comments as possible instead of having critical conversations with your residents. Every voice that spoke last week, even if not everyone liked what was heard, deserved to be heard, period. By banning email comments, you're playing into the hands of right-wing evangelicals who are trying to divide us all as neighbors and friends. A path towards true peace and equality does not continue by removing access for disabled and working Hamtramckans. We should be focused on increasing time and access for us to come together and have the necessary discussions on how we should move our community forward. We must be focused on increasing time and access to the council, not removing it. I ask you again, if you are all, if you all are now focused on removing email comments, how will you properly be compensating residents to deliver comments? Will you be putting the agenda out earlier in advance so our slower mail system can compensate? Again, you are removing the ability for the disabled and hard-working voices to participate with the civil system they are a part of, and I invite you to reconsider this move. Thank you, and have a good evening. That's it for emails? Justin Jessup?
Okay.
Three minutes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Mayor, councilman, thank you for hearing me. I know you don't want to. It seems like everything you've been doing has been geared towards not listening to people. A few years ago, I gave a presentation here in these chambers pitching ranked choice voting so we could have a more representative council. That was shot down. And I really wanted to talk to you today about the Pride flag issue because, again, it seems like the flag project was meant to show inclusivity in our diversity. It wasn't meant to say, hey, we're pro-Poland, or we're pro-Yemen, or we're pro-Bangladesh. This was about celebrating all the people in Hamtramck and their identities. And anybody had access to fly a flag, I don't think we've denied any since the flag project began, until you guys went out of your way to keep the Pride flag flying. Again, this flying that Pride flag isn't about being pro-gay. It's about allowing everyone in Hamtramck their space. Now you're trying to keep comments from being emailed in. You're supposed to listen to your constituents. That's your job. It's your job to represent the community. I don't understand why that doesn't sink in. You guys, I know when you look at a guy like me and he starts talking about his favorite amendments, you're thinking angry white guy, second. He likes his guns. It's not the case. My two favorites are the First Amendment, separation of church and state, and the Fourteenth, which guarantees equal access. And that's what we're talking about with the flag project. It's equal access. If you get to fly your flag and I get to fly my flag, everyone should be able to fly theirs. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Josh Hansknett. I am a resident and homeowner here in Hamtramck, and I'm here to talk to you today about your resolution 23, or 202385. And specifically, I want to talk about how I feel like it is being rushed in and not fully thought through of how you're dealing with the issues that you're having in council. I imagine that resolution 202385 is a response to how long our council meeting was last week, but most council meetings are not this long, and most times we read emails, it does not take the majority of the night. And that really has to say about the division in our community over what was a unanimous vote by council. However, today I want to talk about how this resolution is also very heavy-handed. Removing all email comments doesn't, it does, I guess, solve your issue of having meetings run too long, or if your issue was worried that it was non-residents sharing their comments and being prioritized over residents. You could solve those issues with legislation that solves those issues, but an outright ban really does seem like a attempt to stifle people's ability to speak, which really does publicly seem like an attempt to restrict people's First Amendment rights and participate in their local government. And that's really all I have to say today, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tanya Kapner?
Good evening. My name is Tanya Kapner, and I work with the Coalition to Defend a Perpetual Action, Integration, Immigrant Rights, and Fight for Equality by any means necessary. We're a longtime civil rights organization in the area. We've done a lot of work to defend the public schools and fight for the rights of all students against the Muslim ban at the airport to stand up for integration programs so students of all races can have an equal quality education. And we are here tonight to demand of this council to reverse the ban on the Pride flag. We are here tonight to make clear that the movement for LGBTQ+ rights in this country is not going to be forced back into the closet, that people have a right in this country to be who they are and to be loud and proud about who they are and to have equal opportunities. This city, Hamtramck, should be known as a beacon of progress. As beautiful as it is of people from all over the world to come and live and raise their lives in this city, it should be known as a place of progress. This is not a neutral resolution that was passed before. The whole country knows it. People are talking in The New York Times about Hamtramck playing into the hands of the Trump movement. This should not be a city that goes along in any way with attempts to overturn democracy or build fascism in this country. We are calling on you to reverse the ban on the Pride flag. It is not neutral. It is causing harassment of LGBTQ+ people in this city and towns nearby. It is building towards bigotry. It is not acceptable for a council representing this beautiful city of so many people to try to play into the divide and conquer, to make it impossible for residents to have a home here and be safe, to make it impossible for young people, whatever their gender, to be able to be who they are. There have been marches across this country of trans youth, of young people of all orientations and gender identities, supporting them for progress, for equality. We are not going to accept it. This is not, January 6th was not successful, and we will not let it be successful. This beautiful city should be represented by the council taking up the best interests of all people, which is equality, progress, civil rights, and standing for the rights of the LGBT community to be who they are and express their beauty in this city and town. We're going to keep building this movement. We're going to work with anyone and everyone that wants to make that happen. We demand you do the right thing now and reverse that terrible, bigoted decision. It is not neutral, and the whole world knows that. Please stand for progress and reverse the ban on the Pride flag.
Hi, mayor and council. First, I'd like to point out that there's a couple proclamations that I was surprised didn't appear on this agenda. We recognize an event that the date is July 11th. There's no proclamation or recognition of the Fourth of July. There is no recognition of Juneteenth, also Pride Month. So I just want to point out that those are missing from our agendas. And related to resolution 202385, having a limit of five-minute discussion item per councilman, per agenda item, I think limiting that and restricting that implies that council comes to the meeting knowing what their decision is going to be on any agenda item before there's a discussion, before any clarifying points are made. And I think that really restricts our ability to consider different alternatives, to consider different perspectives, and change our minds in council meetings. I also am opposed to restricting email comments. It is a burden to require people to print out copies or handwrite copies that Rana would have to read somebody's handwriting. And some of the emailed comments included some of the points I'm about to make, but families with small children, if you're a single mom or if your partner's out working, that's a really big burden to come in and physically make a comment. If somebody is traveling, Councilman Refai sent an email comment from Saudi Arabia. There's no way he could possibly have mailed comments in from overseas and participated in the discussion if that rule was instated while he was traveling. Again, mentioning disabled and special needs residents adds additional burdens to their ability to participate in civic discussions. Our senior citizens, if somebody intends to come to a meeting, gets ill on a Monday or Tuesday and is all of a sudden unable to, obviously you can't mail something by then, and we don't want sick people coming to council and transferring that to Rana. And then also, I really want you to consider that this is a representational republic. Our job, or your job as elected officials, is to listen to, respect, and consider the voices of all residents, not just the majority. This is not a democracy in that sense of the word, but really to listen to all residents. Can I ask for another minute? Okay. And I just had a comment also about resolution 202388. I just would like some clarification on the benefits and risks of introducing plastic water lines as opposed to sticking to copper, and just kind of wanted some history and understanding of where this is coming from. And then also, I spoke last meeting about this, resolution 202389. I am in full support of this street sweeper. I think some of the discussion last meeting clarified that this is coming out of the road fund budget and that this will pair very well with the existing one we have out front that picks up all the little stuff. This one will pick up all the big stuff. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Swidel Garrett? Oh, you want to speak at the end, or do you want to speak now? At the end? Oh, at the end? Okay.
Hello, councilmen and mayor. I say councilmen and mayor because that's all you are. It's not a very diverse council. It's all made of men. And that's not your fault because you were elected into the position, so I understand that you guys feel that you are representing the community. My name is Carrie Branch, and I am a Hamtramck resident since 2011. I've been a homeowner since 2021. I am one of your constituents. You represent me. Professionally, I'm a diversity, equity, and inclusion educator. I also work for a nonprofit, and I do a lot of work really closely with the board governance committees. When DEI and policy come together, it's really my sweet spot, so I got pretty fired up about the recent Pride flag ban. I'm willing to play the contrarian and entertain the notion that this resolution was a new administration's attempt at true neutrality. You guys are new. I'll give it to you. So as such, I've set my professional argument to work, and I prepared a draft revised resolution for your consideration. I emailed it to Mayor Glee, City Manager Max, and Rana earlier today. It's a long resolution. I don't think I have enough time to read it all to you, but it is my sincere hope that you will review it and consider it for adoption. I believe that you'll find the language to be truly neutral and that it does not exclude one group, but rather lays out criteria for everyone to apply to see that their identity is represented and respected. There's a quote that I'd like to share from a Dr. Seuss quote. Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not. And I care. Okay? I'm the Lorax, and there are a lot of other people like me here who don't have the opportunity to come in today, and you're trying to restrict their ability to have their voice heard by taking away their ability to email. I think the pandemic talks anything that we need to be more flexible and more accepting of each other.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. Before we start, I ask, please, councilmembers and Mr. Mayor, can you have some respect for your constituents and get off your phone while we're speaking and letting our voice be heard? I would really appreciate that. Letting your voice be heard is something. I'm not only here in opposition to resolution 202382, but also resolution 202385. It seems like this council is intent and dead-set on suppressing the voices of the community. For the sake of this comment, I'm going to assume neutrality was the goal for 2023. for 2023-82. And I'd like to take a second to acknowledge the effect. While it seems like business as usual back here at City Hall, over the last two weeks, at Glenette Theater, a 30-year-old institution right on Kniff, we have had a huge elevation in hate speech. We have had handwritten and emailed hate mail from as far away as Houston, Texas, saying the most terrible things you could ever imagine. People have told us they no longer feel safe in this city, a space that we have built over 30 years, and they don't want to come here anymore. I've had multiple individuals and organizations tell me that they no longer want to work with us in Hamtramck because of the political climate in this city. We've had vandalism. We've had attempts at our flag being ripped off again. If your resolution was neutral, can you at least acknowledge that the effect of this resolution has not been that? I urge you, as soon as this meeting's over, as soon as you have a free second, please make a public, a public statement against the violence, against the vandalism, against the hate speech, because I hope at least we can agree on that.[672.66][672.66](applause) Additionally, I would like to give you the opportunity to support your LGBTQ plus community here in Hamtramck and invite you to our Pride event on July 28th, right down the street. We will be there, we will be loud, and we will have fun. If you do care about your constituents, hey, come show them, 6 o'clock, July 28th. I would also invite you to sit down with myself and other community leaders and business owners in this city to address the growing divide and violence and hatred here as a result of Resolution 2023-82. Also, I would like to ask this council, and maybe this is a question for the city's lawyer as well, how is it that there are still banners hanging up on the light poles? They're not the five flags in question. Consider that, please. I really urge you to reconsider. I urge you to examine the effect. I urge you to speak out against violence and hatred and all types to all people in this city. And I want to again remind you that I love this city and I hope that you do also. And I want to remind you that it is the diversity of people and ideals that make this city great. And I will continue to fight and I will be here every two weeks until you're sick of me. Thank you.
Thank you.[759.75][759.75](applause) Melissa Dorfes?
Hi, my name is Melissa Dorfes and I'm here to talk to you tonight because I heard on the news that our mayor said that the opposition to the pride flag resolution was being brought by outsiders. And I want to tell you right now, I am not an outsider. I am a resident of Hamtramck who has owned property, voted, paid taxes, and lived here for 25 years, which I'm pretty sure is longer than any of you. I am a resident of here. This is my hope and I am against this resolution. And so if you think this is being brought by outsiders, you are wrong. I'm going to take good faith that you're mistaken and did not mean to say that, but if you continue to support that statement, I'm going to already say you're a liar and that I'm willing to publicly denounce that to any other voter I find. So I think that I personally am offended by this statement, that you think that the people here would support this, because they do not. I am one of them. I have been for longer than any of you have been. So I am against both that and the resolution that blocks people from being able to comment and force you to hear from us, because we as your constituents are the ones who need to hear from us. And that is all I have to say.
Thank you.[844.54][844.54](applause) Adrian, can you pronounce your last name for me?
It's Lopkowicz.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Adrian Lopkowicz. I'm also an organizer with By Any Means Necessary and I'm also queer and transgender. I just wanted to use my time here to say that pride flags are nothing to fear unless what you fear is unconditional love and acceptance. If you had taken the time to learn what the pride flag actually stood for, you would know that the rainbow was chosen specifically because it's not only a symbol of hope, but also a symbol of diversity. It says that although we may be different, express our love and authentic selves differently and live different lives entirely, in this community, we are one big family. The decision made by this council is frustrating to say the least because not only are you turning your back on the community and me, you are turning your backs on a community built on the foundations of love and understanding. You're turning your backs on people who would never do that to you and people who understand that regardless of the horrible and unjust decisions made by this council now and in the future, we will still never turn our backs on you when you need it because we recognize that this is what the real enemy wants. You fail to realize that the people you choose to side with will always refuse to see people like you and us as human and deserving of love and respect. You can't remain neutral in situations of hate because that just shows the oppressors, the bigots, the hate groups, that what they're doing is working, that if they try hard enough, you will just step to the side and let them be as hateful and cruel as they want. Queer rights have come far, but not far enough. And the rise of anti-gay and anti-trans legislation over the course of the past few years proves just how important it is to take a side. Whether your lives it or not, people's lives are at stake over this. And you are sending a message to those hate groups and the rest of the world that Hamtramck not only allows, but welcomes hatred and intolerance. You are saying this council welcomes hatred and intolerance. And all we want is the right to tell people that they are loved, welcome, and safe here. How can you fail to see the difference? And that's all.
Thank you.[969.87][969.87](applause) Mr. Bill Meyer?
Hello, Bill Meyer, One Hamtramck Organization. So this is my 23rd year of attending council meetings. I've been here longer than anybody. I've always attended more meetings than anybody. And one of my major goals was to try to get people to come down here and participate as a public voice. I'm excited to see what's happening now that people are showing up. There were many, many meetings that I was here alone for a long time. You have to hear from the public and these are all important voices. And our One Hamtramck organization is a group that's brought together to fight for social justice, against Islamophobia, against any form of discrimination, against anyone. And so we're going to be a part of our bits. I think the best way to solve this very difficult problem, differences which we've had all through our history. I remember coming here when it was the old guard poles by fighting the new guard pole. And then it changed to the poles aren't fighting the Muslims. We always find something to fight each other about. The trick is to try to live with people who you don't agree with, as I said at the last meeting. That's the compliment. That's the goal and it's very difficult to achieve. One way to do it is to learn about each other, is to walk a mile in their shoes, get to know them personally, get to understand their issues, their concerns, and see them as human beings. It's the same on both sides. I know most of you guys and I would never insult any of you because I know you personally and I know you have good hearts. You mean good. You might do something that offends other people, but that's very common in the world. But I don't see a person there that I don't like. I don't see anybody in this audience I don't like. I've worked in the LGBTQ community, worked against anti-gay things back in the 70s, 80s. I fought for workers' rights, for all sorts of rights, for equality, for justice, for everybody. So I know you love the people in all communities in this city and you serve all people in this community. The gay community's been hurt very bad by this issue, but I think you, I have to say, I think you chose the only way out to solve this problem because this city is, which many people won't accept, we've been fighting the white power structure in this city for the last 23 years. Finally, we've rectified that to some degree. The hardest thing is that, you know, you're people that are not the same, then they have different issues. They have to find a way to get together. 30 seconds? Can I get the connection? Okay. I just want to, this issue wasn't what I want to talk about. I wanted to mention about the ordinance, the resolution about the council meetings. I wanted to ask if you please consider changing the public comments at the end of the meeting so that it's allowed to speak about any topic, just like at the beginning of the council meeting. Because there's a lot of people who can't get there at the beginning of the meeting and they, they would like to speak about some issue that might not be on the agenda. I don't think that's a thing to worry about. But all these years I've been here coming to council meetings, we never had any problem. My concern was if you don't get her, you don't get to talk. That's it. Now all of a sudden, we had emails. That's great. Or we could write letters and send them. I mean, it's getting better and all, but I can see how that can get out of control. So you have to find a way to do it, whether it's an issue you defend or you support or you don't. This could be like 500 emails coming in easily. So you have to have some system on how to resolve this so that people don't feel they're being cut off. I know you don't want to cut off the community because I know all of you individually. You talk to me about these issues. Let's learn about each other. Let's talk to each other. Shake hands, find out what our differences are, and try to find a way to live together because so we can all live better together. This city will only get better when we work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.[1208.83][1208.83](applause) Mr. Mayor, let's talk to public comments.
All right. Thank you. Move to the constant agenda, but maybe before that I should clarify something. I released a statement to denounce all that kind of vandalism. I don't know if this is in the city website and I don't have to keep posting over and over. I mean, I said that and it was clear. We don't support any kind of vandalism against LGBTQ or anybody else in the community. And we value your presence. We hear your comments. We don't ignore them. Some people think that we just don't care. No. Although we get some aggressive emails and comments on social media, we try to ignore those too. I mean, we receive all kinds of horrible emails, including some threats, but we ignore those. But people who come here and speak their opinion respectfully, we take it into consideration. So we'll try our best to do anything we could to make everybody happy in the city. And that was our, our opinion that Resolution 82 was the best way to get off this dilemma of people asking to fly their flags, because people will do it just in response to your demands of flying the flag. They will come and say, we need our flag, which could be a weird flag that we cannot reject it. I read part of that resolution that one of our people here sent. And you put some criteria, but some acceptable flags to you is not acceptable to somebody else. You may think this one is a sign of love. Somebody else would think it's, you know, so we can't.
It's on the white house.
Folks.
Make some criteria. Your power.
Well, that's what you're saying. So I'm just explaining what others think. So we take your opinion into consideration. Others have different ideas and different opinions and we have to listen to them too. The fact that they are not here doesn't mean we should ignore them. They are everywhere. So I think the best way just to be neutral is to just fly your flag in your own properties and leave the city neutral. The fact that it's not flowing, please, don't interrupt me. The fact that it's not flowing in the city hall does not impact your quality of life or race or freedoms at home. It does not. But I mean, others don't have their flag flowing in the city hall and they are not complaining. But we stop. We listen to you. We read your emails and we listen to your comments and we discuss them. Thank you. We'll move to the constant agenda. We have approval of minutes from the June 13, 2023 regular city council meeting, approval of envoys registered date ending June 27, 2023, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending June 26, 2023, Resolution 2023-84 approving appointments to boards and commissions.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have the poll.
I have. Here I am, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, we're swearing come into the planning commission. Raise your hand for me. I state your name.
I, Akla Ziyevova.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duty of.
The planning commission.
Planning commission.
Of the city of Hamtramck.
City of Hamtramck.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[1480.87][1480.87](applause)
Salaam alaikum. A'lamu barak. Happy Eid to all of you. You know, thank you for giving me this opportunity to serve my community. I live in Hamtramck over 33 years and I was a DEA member also for two years. And thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Move to the new business. We have Resolution 2023-85 modifying general provisions governing the Hamtramck City Council.
Motion, second.
Next, you want to take on this one?
Resolution 2023-85 modifying general provisions governing the Hamtramck City Council, first presented at a meeting of the City Council of the City of Hamtramck, Wayne County, Michigan, held on March 28, 2023, at City Hall 3041 Evans Line Street, Hamtramck, Michigan, 4822. Whereas on February 22, 2022, the City Council passed a resolution regarding general provisions governing City Council Hamtramck, whereas the current City Council wishes to amend Section 7 of those provisions as outlined below. Seven, rules of debate addressing the City Council decorum. The rules of parliamentary procedure compromised in the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order newly revised shall govern all rules of debate addressing the City Council and decorum provided they are not in conflict with the Hamtramck City Charter. A, elected officials are only permitted to speak up to five minutes per agenda item. B, any person may address the City Council during a City Council meeting without prior permission of the City Council or the chair, subject to the following. One, interested parties or their authorized representatives may address the City Council by written communication with respect to any matter by delivering to the city clerk a copy of the written communication received by 4:00 p.m. on the date of the City Council meeting. No such written communication will be accepted via email or any other electronic means. All written communications must be delivered via courier such as United States Post Service or in person by hand. Two, each person who wishes to address the City Council shall submit a request form to the city clerk. When called, approach the podium, shall limit his or her remarks for up to three minutes at the beginning of the meeting on any topic. Each person may address the City Council for two minutes at the end of the meeting on agenda items only. A person may request one additional minute at either public comment. All remarks shall be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any specific members thereof. No public comment will be accepted by email. The city clerk must keep track of the time limits and cut the public comments after the allotted time has elapsed. Further, all commenters shall be called at a first come, first served basis. No person other than the City Council and the person having the floor shall be permitted to enter any discussion either directly or through the council member without the permission of the chair. No questions shall be asked of council member except through the chair. Council members shall have the opportunity to respond to comments by individual members of the public immediately after the comment, provided that the responses shall not exceed two minutes per council member. Information presentation of longer than five minutes may be placed on the agenda at the discretion of the city manager to take place at the beginning of the meeting. C, while the City Council is in session, the members shall preserve order and decorum. A council member shall not by conversation or otherwise delay or interrupt proceedings or the peace of the City Council disturb any council member while speaking or refuse to obey the orders of the City Council or its chair. Every council member wishing to speak shall address the chair and upon recognition of the chair shall confine himself or herself to the question under debate, avoiding all personalities, indecorious language, personal impertinent or slanderous remarks, or become boisterous, or shows obvious signs to be under the influence of drugs or alcohol. A council member violating this section shall forfeit all remaining opportunities to debate the meaning of the meeting. The chair may direct a sergeant-at-arms to remove the offending person. D, if any member of the public makes personal, impertinent, slanderous remarks, becomes boisterous while addressing the City Council, or shows obvious signs of under the influence of drugs or alcohol, the chair may bar that person from addressing the City Council for the remainder of the meeting. The chair may direct the sergeant-at-arms to remove the offending person. E, cellular telephone ringers shall be turned off. Now therefore, be resolved that Resolution 2022-19, section 7, is amended as written above, passed and approved by the City Council, City of Hamtramck, Wayne County, Michigan, this 27th day of June 2023.
Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
I would like to bring some.
or shows obvious signs of under the influence of drugs or alcohol, the Chair may bar that person from addressing the City Council for the remainder of the meeting. The Chair may direct the sergeant-at-arms to remove the offending person. E, cellular telephone ringers shall be turned off. Now therefore, it resolves that Resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen section seven is amended as written above, passed and approved by the City Council, City of Hamtramck, Wayne County, Michigan, this twenty-seventh day of June, two thousand twenty-three.
Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor. I would like to bring some motion regarding this eighty twenty-three eighty-five. So the, well, these only agenda items only. I want to change to the any topics. I think when public comes, sometimes it's good to listen what they are talking about. Many times, you know, the concern that we have or the items on the agenda, there are other issues in the community that we need to hear. So I'd like to change to allow on any topics instead of the agenda.
You mean the second round?
Second, yes. To what you say, the City Council, end of the meeting on agenda allowed, allowed on agenda items only. I'd like to change it to allow any topics to discuss. Also, I would change to adding motion to the public comments. I think we should.
We had to do one motion at a time.
So while both are on the same paragraph.
I think it's still.
You should vote them one at a time.
One at a time, sure.
So the first motion, you would have both the beginning and the end of the comments all open-ended. Great, okay.
On any topic.
On any topic, yes.
Do we have seconds?
Sure. So then you speak about agenda item plus any item or?
No, you're going to discuss this motion and either vote on it or not before you speak on any other topic.
The motion is on the floor to amend it right now, so the discussions aren't amended.
Any discussion? You guys want to just vote, want to vote on it? Councilman Muhyi, Councilman Mahmoud.
On the?
On your motion to make it on any topic.
Any topics, yes.
Yes. Councilman, Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, amendment to change second public comment to any topic approved.
Also, Mr. Mayor, on this same paragraph, on the emailing. I think we should, we should hear from people what they are trying to say as many, you know. Presenters say there are people, some has some obligation, some of the out of state, some maybe have keys on be able to make to the City Hall. Or, you know, someone may be a disability. So we need to hear everyone. I would like to, I understand that last meeting we had like outrageous emails. So we can make a like minimal probably ten or fifteen email first, first come, first served. I mean, after receiving ten or fifteen email, you know, you have a great technology in this country. Let's hope it should get redacted by itself. And then read up to the ten or fifteen or twenty emails, whatever you guys decided.
So there's a way to to make, to receive emails from our residents or disabled, not from someone from Florida or California. I mean, that would work. Is there a way we can filter out emails? And I mean, I don't know. I would like to listen from our residents only. I don't want to read five hundred email from all over the world, or maybe from Europe.
But like one of the residents said, it doesn't happen that often. I I have like two, three, sometimes none. When it's a juicy subject, you're gonna have some kind of reaction. So you're making this decision based on very few incidences when this happens.
But it's still, we will have a lot of our residents here too. We have to listen to them, so.
Suggestion?
Maybe at the end of the round. Yes, yes, you cannot. Yes, Councilman.
We'd like to hear every, either everywhere, like the email or come to the council meeting. But everything has to some rules and regulations. We cannot, we have to give the priority our resident, our people who live in our residence area. And we can choose not one hundred twenty-five or something else. How long you can read this message, how long you can read this email? We have to make some numbers, maybe fifteen or twenty max, and then we can go something else.
Or they can send their address with the email.
Yeah, that's something.
Confirm their address, their residency. They could, I, we could just offer it to be submitted email, and we have.
Our, our city attorney is advising against single email. Well, honestly, our fill-in city attorney.
I don't think you can make distinction between residents and non-residents. That's going to create a.
And then what about business owners?
Or we can get some best more.
Yeah, sure. You know, there's, there's one more thing I want to actually amend after we finish with this. But I think until we come to a plan on how we could accept emails and if they are from the, you know, from Hamtramck residents. I think if we were able to pass this and then come up with a plan with the City Manager, or we could allow emails just from the City of Hamtramck. There, there is programs, there's a way of, you know, having residents.
You did mention a motion, but nobody seconded the motion to adjust the.
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
I'm sorry.
So like I said, I think if, if we're able to pass this resolution with First Amendment, and there's another one I wanted to. And then maybe plan something to see if we, if there's a way that we could accept emails in a way only from Hamtramck residents. So maximum plan of program or somehow after.
I literally was asking or turning that exact question is now.
I don't think you can discriminate against people that live in Troy. I think they are residents of the state, they're covered by the Open Meetings Act, you know, people from Dearborn. You don't want people from Hamtramck who have an issue in Troy or Dearborn to be excluded from giving comment when they are allowed to address. Under the First Amendment, they are allowed to address their elected representatives. Whether or not they vote for them, whether or not they vote for them, you're in that position. So if you're going to allow, if you're going to allow people from Hamtramck, you got to let people from Canton or or wherever to speak. I don't think you can make that distinction. Everybody knows what your email addresses are that wants to address people by email. It's not as if the right to address their elected representatives is being infringed by not having read an open public meeting. But, you know, that's a decision that you want to make.
Mr. Chair, a quick question to the, can we limit the amount, like the eight, fifteen?
You can limit that, you can limit the number, you can limit the time. You know, those are all things that have been done before. I think the courts have recognized that meetings actually have to happen. You can't come here every other Tuesday and have five hours of public comment and no work, nothing getting done by the body. So there has to be some balance in that.
Mr. Chair, you know, I know there is no resolution of the law that states that our city for recent emails. I know it started during COVID, correct?
Once, but yes, but once you allow, once you allow that to happen, you can't pick and choose based upon where somebody lives.
But there is no rule or resolution in our.
That requires.
Requires.
Right, but once you allow it, you have to do it in a way that is fair to everybody.
We can, can we put some limit, the number, we can do that much?
That was my motion regarding this resolution. I was asking for fifteen, maybe first fifteen.
First fifteen, fifteen or whatever. We choose. Let's work. If you can, if you want, otherwise you can modify.
Well, if you changed your motion, you'd have to withdraw your motion and re-motion the new wording.
Well, no, I'm not changing it. I said fifteen at the beginning.
So there is a motion on the table to, for fifteen, limiting to fifteen? Okay. Is there a side?
Yeah.
Guys want to vote on it or still?
Is this up to fifteen emails?
First come.
On a first come, first served basis, based upon the timestamp that is received in the email inbox of the court, wherever the court receives.
It also should not exceed the three minutes.
Well, I think they get the four total. That's why usually if I read an email, a long email, because the resolution states that you can't ask for an additional minute. We do up to four minute email. Most of them don't even reach four minutes, so.
And that's all.
So.
That's because I've never sent him an email probably.
Yes, exactly.
It's true.
So are we voting on fifteen limited? Fifty emails?
Before we vote, is it, is it mentioned in the, in the open act that emails, public council emails?
You're not required under the Open Meetings Act to do that. If someone with a disability were to request reasonable accommodation, you would have to make a determination as to whether or not that is a reasonable accommodation for that person.
So you mentioned to me today that some cities, they, they put limit even in person comes.
On the first come, right?
Like they put thirty, thirty minutes and whoever comes first. So we can use that for the emails. I mean, you guys want?
I think we can start off with fifteen.
Yeah.
Fifteen, vote. Mr. Mayor, vote.
Go ahead.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, amendment to Resolution twenty-three eighty-five limiting emails to first come, first served, the first fifteen that I receive.
All right, so now we got two amendments that passed, and now we need to vote on the.
I need to motion to approve the amended resolution.
I'm delaying motion. I still have one more amendment.
Oh.
Sorry. And that will be A, for elected officials are permitted to speak up to five minutes. I think it should be no limit for a official to speak.
That's actually not a change. It's actually been the way it's been.
No, it's on here.
Yeah.
You know, but it's not it, it's what it was. It's just regurgitated language.
If you've ever watched a C-span debate, you know that when a speaker yields their time, it's because there are strict limits that are observed in parliamentary debate on, on time. And there are exceptions, obviously, filibusterism in real life, but, you know, typically in order to maintain the orderly progress of a meeting, you have to, some people are more loquacious than others. You have to limit the debate. So you've had that, you've had that provision for a number of years.
In the five minutes, right?
Technically, yeah.
I don't know that it's been observed, but it's, that's not a change from the rules.
I think it's been timed yet.
So you take that back?
Yes, I'll take it.
Okay. So we are now voting on.
To.
Yeah, so I need a motion on.
I did motion. Second.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution twenty-three eighty-five amended approved.
Thank you. We have Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighty-six approving appointments of auditors for judicial statements and single audit for the City of Hamtramck.
Motion second.
Mr. Mayor, we conducted an RFP on this. As there are a limited number of auditors that can actually do this for the city, we actually emailed out to the large ones that were aware of and the ones that have in the past audited the City of Hamtramck. One declined, two gave us actual bids, and again, U H Y came in the best. It is our recommendation that we again select U H Y.
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution eighty-eighty-seven approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighty-seven approving twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three fourth quarter budget amendment.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, as counsel and yourself are aware, we do the quarterly amendments. This will be the last one for the year. Basically, it's just trying to keep the budget in line with where it's supposed to be, moving, moving money around, moving budgets around. Our controller is here for any specific questions. He's analyzed pretty carefully and moved things accordingly, and it is as presented.
Any more discussion, any questions for the final?
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution twenty-three eighty-seven approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighty-eight approving first reading of amendment to the City of Hamtramck Code of Ordinance, Chapter fifty-one, one zero zero four, service, uh, service pipe specification.
Is there anyone available from now?
Can I get a?
A motion, I can take.
Second.
I need a motion.
On motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, I do have our DPS director here. Typically, Hennessy comes, but we figured we could probably handle this one. Basically, what it is, is our current code ordinances requires us to only use copper for the service lines into the houses. We are now aware that copper is becoming a little bit more harder to acquire. It's slowing up our progress on replacing the service lines. And it's come to our attention that there are very good solutions in plastic that are arguably even better than the copper and less expensive. I know that a public comment did come through questioning that. It is, I do not believe that there is anything, any issues with what we're trying to use here. There is approved piping that many cities use. Some cities actually require the plastic as opposed to the copper nowadays. It is kind of across the board, but it is cheaper, more efficient, and quicker to do. Did I miss anything there, John?
Yeah, the, the plastic's being more commonly used just because of the availability of it. Copper's hard to get. Everything has to be approved by Eagle anyhow, and there's different forms of the plastic pipe you can get. And a lot of our water, the water line that we just put down can have this plastic. So if you were going to have a copper line, it's going to hook up to a plastic vein. The advantage going with the, the poly is we can service about six changes a day compared to three. So we're on timelines for changing out these service lines. The contractors can work a lot faster with the plastic. One, it's lighter, and it's high-dense, it doesn't kink. So once you bend the copper, it's over. The plastic, you want to go back in place, it doesn't freeze, it goes up, goes back down. So there's a lot of benefits that way. It, it slows down the trade, especially kind of three hundred pound roll of copper, you know, into a household. The other thing that's really important is getting the trades to do the service lines has become a very big challenge. And we, I believe we're going to have more people dead on changing service lines if we allow the plastic. Because a lot of companies just aren't putting in the debt to do it because of the concrete.
Additionally, we believe there's a longer life expectancy.
It's two hundred years.
Hey, we're, we're getting reports that the copper, even though copper is traditionally good, that the quality of the copper we're getting is an aspect.
The other problem with the copper is if you have a set of soil somewhere different, one part of the city is another part or a high sulfur area, the copper's, copper's, you know, just deteriorate faster, the plastic one.
So the main lines will be actually plastic? The ones that are heading to the homes, from, from the street to the home? Are they still?
What be the, yeah, we need H D P. We are, it's lots, it's, it's a poly pipe continuous roll. And right now, like I said, on caneth, we have that currently is a main, so that's what we just put in.
Is that the first plastic movie?
I'm not quite sure what they did on some of ours in Duck Town Iron. We haven't, we got a couple of them tonight, but everybody's going to the H D P. It's just that we can get it, it doesn't slow the contractors down, and it's the cost factor. We're going to save approximately two hundred dollars a house, so it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar savings to the city also. Not even counting the time constraints that we're going to save.
We're, we're also trying to ramp up this program to get a lot more done, a lot faster, for a whole myriad of reasons. And we're just not able to do it with copper as well.
It's slow. Mr. Chair. So immediately what process is it taking to convert to plastic or?
No, this is just for the individual line coming from the main to the, to the person's house. Right now, we're using copper, so it wouldn't be like they're lost, it's just like they have another product they can use, and it's still running the service line. Like the wood, as if it was copper, it's just going to be plastic.
Usually I heard that plastic is better than copper.
There's one other benefit, it gets a little more technical. With the copper, a lot of cities use the copper because it's a ground. You have a ground wire connecting, they go to the, connect right by the meter. So when you go to a plastic, you have to re-ground. A lot of people have faults in their house already. But once we put this insurance with them, our first question was, is who's going to do the grounding? The grounding's included. So they're actually going to install two ground rods connected from the panel to where it's supposed to be. So it's actually putting the resident a lot better light to.
Any net savings of money?
Anisotrope.
How many, thirty thousand dollars?
Hundred twenty thousand. I'm not up here to suspend your money all the time.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2388 approved.
Thank you. Next one, reintroducing the sweeper. Resolution 2023-89 approving the purchase of one street sweeper truck for the Department of Public Service.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we have John here to speak on this again. He really wants this truck.
Last time, there was a little bit of confusion who would actually pay for it. It actually comes out of the road, I'm not...
You sure?
Yes. After I mentioned that to a few council members in the hallway in the Mary's, they'd like to change the way people voted, so why don't you reintroduce it? A little technicality with having the first sweeper mentioned. Come back after you get your first one. That's why park it up front.
Strategic.
We did meet that requirement and brought the parked out front, which is a beautiful unit. And I knew I had a client here with the... The one that sold the first unit, he's the one that has the second unit.
I'm Clark Bushman with Bell Equipment. I've been blessed to be doing this selling environmental equipment in Michigan and Ohio and other states now for forty years for a safe company. Our location in Michigan is located in Lake Orion, and we sell and service sweepers and sewer cleaning equipment, trucks and other things. And we don't just sell it. We support it after markets apart, support in parts. We'll be here tomorrow to do training for a staff because, to my knowledge, in my four years, City of Hamtramck's never owned a sweeper. You contracted most of that. And when I go down your streets and see you're doing new curb and gutter and such, that this, what you're doing in this community is wonderful. From a aesthetic standpoint, from a value-added standpoint to your residents, what sweeper can do is phenomenal. And the old adage is, it's always cheaper to remove debris when it's above the street than when it's below it. Because when you start getting down in sewer lines and having to put sewer cameras and sewer equipment in there, which we also sell, it's a lot more expensive to do. And it's a higher training that those sewer operators need as well. Certification for water and sewer is much more involved. But, so what you're asking tonight and what we've discussed is, if you're going to have two sweepers, and I've got others in Michigan that do this, it's nice to have an air sweeper, which is the sweeper that's sitting out here right now, because it gives you the ability to do a couple of things. To sweep anytime by itself, pick up the fines, and also, it's got a wandering hose off the back that you're going to be able to clean your catch bases, rev and contract that out. And that alone, pretty substantial savings is what you shared with me to help justify it. And then the second sweeping, sweeper is asking about is the Elgin Pelletin, which is the, that sweeper's been manufactured in some form since 1914, Elgin, Illinois. It's the top-selling sweeper in the world. And you couple a mechanical in the spring of the year in front of a vacuum or an air machine, and then in the fall of the year, so the mechanical's going and picking up all the heavier debris that, you know, comes from the winter and that leaves in such in the fall. And then the air machine comes by and picks up the debris scattered and such. So you're going to have the best of both worlds, and you'll be top of class for the sweeper program. You're going to have a happy community in the state of Michigan, because I've been at all of them. So we appreciate your confidence in us, and we do what we say and we say what we do. Gentlemen, thank you.
Ready, Mayor?
I mean, you guys have any more questions?
No.
I mean, you can always sell those sweepers. They're not effective, just like the emergency manager did. Now we are buying stuff for the city. In the past, they used to sell the stuff so they can fix the budget. Now we're buying stuff, so hopefully they will be helpful and effective in cleaning the city.
Also, Mr. Mayor, hopefully you don't listen from the, our residents, the city is not cleaning anymore.
We still have to do some work to clean the parks and front yards, because this machine is not going to go again.
I know, beside the parks, the roads. I'm working for one.
We shall have to work too.
Yeah, there you go.
We are the community people. Do their part, and the city will do their part. Everybody do their part.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2389 approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one and the last one is Resolution 2023-90, approving the contract award for towing services to Nationwide Recovery.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we have the chief here to speak on this. This is also an RFP that the chief put together and we bid it out. This is the company we've had for a while, and the chief can explain first.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. This agenda item is to have the council consider the approval of a three-year contract with Nationwide Recovery for towing services with a two-year renewal option at the same rates if approved. On May 18th of 2023, the City of Hamtramck placed a request for proposal on BidNet Direct Purchasing System, and seven vendors submitted bids, including our current vendor, Nationwide Recovery. Nationwide's contract began on July 1st of 2018 and was renewed in 2021 for two more years. The services provided by Nationwide Recovery have been delivered in a professional and timely manner. The police department is extremely satisfied with the services that the city has been received. Nationwide Recovery has agreed to provide towing services for the city using several of the same rates outlined in their previous contract. And I would say their bid came in about mid-range for all their standard tow rates. And there are several services that they have agreed to provide at no cost, such as battery booths, tire chambers, and lockouts. They've also agreed to continue their three days of free storage for City of Hamtramck residents. Nationwide does use state-of-the-art software for records management, and they include photographs with all of the vehicles that they have towed for us. Continuing services with Nationwide Recovery would allow for a smooth transition of services with no disruptions. Now, you have Mr. Louis Hussain here. If you have any questions for him or questions for me.
Salaam alaikum. Louis Hussain, Nationwide Recovery. And we're very honored to do business with the city, and we're very happy, and hopefully we get your support for five, three more years.
If you don't mind, ask, where's your facility?
Our facility is located in Detroit off the Jefferson and Connor, and our evidence facility is located in Island Park. We have a 137-square-foot evidence facility there. But we also have seven yards throughout Wayne County. We tow for eighteen different municipalities in Wayne County right now. And we're one of the largest towers. We pride ourselves on being very efficient, quick ETAs. All our ETAs are generally under ten minutes. Very big on loss prevention. All our trucks have three cameras on them that, you know, visualize the front, the back, and the inside of the cab. We try to, we pride ourselves on being the best. And we like to keep providing that service to the City of Hamtramck and the great police department you guys have. Any questions?
No, thank you.
No, okay, thank you.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2390 approved.
Thank you. Alright, so some of the new businesses, and we move to the report. And I'll start with my report. I just want to take this moment and send my deep condolences to our city attorney on passing of his father-in-law. Sorry to hear that. He texted me today, and it's very sad, so... We all are sorry for hearing that to happen before the Eid. It's very sad. I also want to take this opportunity to say Eid Mubarak to all our residents who will celebrate Eid tomorrow, and to all Muslims around the world. Other than that, again, I want to discuss some of the topics that haven't been discussed so much over the past weeks. Trying to do our best to keep our cities safe and calm, and to keep our residents safe also. One of the residents asked me if I meant to say the outsiders for all the people who protested. I don't mean all of them. I just meant that some outsiders will come and join. But I know our residents were there too. But on the other hand, I did my part to call the people in the community not to do a counter protest like they were planning to, just to avoid any violence or any problems that could happen. I did so much, so many calls to community leaders with a mask who are trying to do a counter protest. And I was able and successful to convince them not to do so. And if that happened, you wouldn't see this fifty or a hundred people. There would be thousands of people protesting. So, and we called people even from outside, not to join us. We don't want any people from outside to do counter protest in our city. So hopefully, we'll be able to keep our cities safe and calm and, you know, decrease this tension that's happening. And again, we are here to listen to everybody. We will consider every person's comment and opinion. We are not ignoring anyone. And I would like to thank everyone who joined us today, and I appreciate that taking the time to come and join us. I'm always willing to talk and communicate with you, like you suggested. I mean, communication is always the best way to solve problems. We have to understand each other and to learn from our differences. I guess that's all. There were some activities that happened over the past two weeks. I can't remember because the main issue is, you know, covering everything else. I can't remember anything like that. But there were some activities, including, and most important, when today in the morning, we, with our attorney, I mean, former attorney Jim Allen and the city manager, we attended the kickoff of construction of the last three houses of the 200 houses that were ordered to be built as a result of the Saragert lawsuit that happened in 1968. And with building those three houses that would start soon, we would end 55 years' old discrimination, housing discrimination lawsuit that happened in Hamtramck. And that's the good news for us. We had the funds for those houses, and it's going to be built. And we are very honored to have, to end this discrimination case now after so many years, hoping that it will not happen again. That's all for my report. Mayor Potem is not here. City Council reporter, if you would like to say something, break...
Mr. Chair. Councilman... I want to thank everybody that showed up here today. And also, happy Eid to all our residents that celebrate Eid a lot. And wish everybody the best, and hopefully, everybody will enjoy this beautiful holiday that's happening here in our city. Welcome Jim Allen back in the city. It's been a while.
I've been here. I was back here.
And that's it. Please be safe. Enjoy your day.
Mr. Mayor. Good evening to the audience, and good evening to everyone, my colleague. First of all, Odeh, he texted all of us to his father-in-law, his, you know, his friends. It means a lot that this really is about the city and, you know, to the job. So, and our deepest condolences to his family and his wife, family. And secondly, one of the commentators came out there, all councilmen, or looked like all are male here, not female. But just to make a correction, that, you know, our residents, even though they're majority Muslims, but we voted a woman. Tremendous amount of vote, record-breaking vote she got. I meant that because she resigned for her personal reason. It's not our fault. So it's not that we're just representing, trying to represent, trying to elect a man for the city council, you know, with support women, with support female. And I voted for her too. It's not, nothing to lie. So just to make a correction there. Also, being honest, it's not personal. Either the social media and news media, that's a big, make it a big deal. The amendment came because of, as you say, the small community. And when you do one thing, everybody expected the same things, as Mayor mentioned before. This community is that small. The people complain that, you know, some people are driving recklessly over on our street. When we reach out to our city manager or police chief, say, hey, you know, we need more produce patrolling. Next they complain, we can't even drive in the city because too many, they are giving us too many tickets. So our jobs, it's always difficult. And if we decide to put the flag, then everybody will come out with different ideas and different flag that they want to fly. So that was the reason we banned every flag, not the LDBTQ. You know, nothing personal with you guys. I think the timing was bad. It came to the bad timing. This will happen. Otherwise, you know, this is a beautiful city. We all enjoy, and nothing personal as I say. And we should, all should love each other, respect each other. Thank you.
Okay. Chair, Councilman...
Thank you very much. The people are, people was here. They made the comment about the LDBTQ. I just personally tell them, we are trying to work for everybody peacefully and equally. You are our friends. I hope we go more further and with the respect. And if you have any issue, you told us before last meeting, also if you have any issue, come forward. City manager here, we are here, police chief is here. We try to solve anything if you have any personal issue come up. When any hate come or anything else there. And I support Mr. Mayor, yes. Personally, people come to us also. They want to protest also against your protest. So we, we tried to tell them, no, not to do this at this moment. It's not the time to, it is, it is not the solution to protest against protest. They want their, they want to put their opinion also, their choice also. We try to work together. My other colleague told me, told you before, speed bump. We want to, for the safety, we want to put the speed bump. But some people say, oh, we put too many speed bump. It's really hard to work together, but please, work with us. We try your best, and peacefully, smoothly, all those things we'd like to do are done in the City of Hamtramck. And finally, we see the nice, our street sweeping truck there. And we hope, we have another one coming together. So we don't want to hear any complaint from the resident, so our street is not clean. And I urge to the resident, please do your part. You'll clean your house, back here and front also. And I hope city will be do their part. Together, we make this city nice and clean. And lastly, again, I would tell each and every one, City of Hamtramck, Michigan, and abroad, all the Muslim community, happy Eid Mubarak. Eid Mubarak. Tomorrow, we are celebrating Eid al-Aza. Eid Mubarak. Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Yes. Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone who came today to the meeting, to show up to the meeting and to make the public comment. And I am sorry to hear with Odeh, his father, that he's passed away. And I'd like to Eid Mubarak for all the Muslim, because they have the holiday. And they're going to, next week, they're going to be ending this day, the 4th of July, Happy 4th of July. And thank you for it. Thank you. Alright, so, the city council report. Do we have a report for the chief financial officer?
He's... He left, I believe.
Oh, he left, okay. Alright, then we get to the city manager.
Just a few things, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to express my condolences for our city attorney and his family on this difficult time. Also want to give another reminder about the Saragert monument commencement tomorrow at 5:00 PM at Saragert Park. We are expecting a pretty good turnout, and we're hoping the rest of the community comes out as well. Street sweeper, first one's here. The training, as we know, is going to get rolling. We're hoping to see that around the city hall or around the city real soon, along with the second one to follow up soon. And lastly, happy Eid, everybody.
Alright, we are back to the public comments again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then lastly. So does that new rule take effect right now? Can you speak on any topic?
Yes.
I wish you can. So you can say happy Eid if you want to. So you can, you can say Happy Eid if you want to.
Right, yeah. There was actually something off the agenda, I was like, oh, I can't talk about that. I don't remember what it is. But anyway, hello again, mayor and council. I do have a question of clarification regarding resolution 2023-85 as amended. I'm curious if there's, if there can be a system in place to let people know if their, like, number 16 email, that their email is not going to be read by mayor councils or at the end meetings, so that there's a system in place that people can know and they're not surprised when it's not read. Also, just kind of a clarifying question. I know Plant Moran declined to be our auditor, but I know they also provide other services for the city, and I was curious if those other services were going to continue, because the presentations are frankly really awesome.
Yes.
Okay. And then I wanted to congratulate Abdul Aziz and Amdu Faraj for their appointments on our boards and commissions. Those are really important ways for community members to participate and serve the community. I encourage anyone who's interested to apply to be on a boards or commission. And I wish I could remember the non-agenda item that I had. How much more time do I have? Oh.
45 seconds.
Okay. Eid Mubarak, Happy 4th of July, and all that. Thank you.
Dwight Del Garrett?
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to listen, mayor and council. Glad some of y'all did make it out to June 19th. Third annual June 19th. First annual March. Glad some of y'all made it out. And I'm also honored that y'all are doing a dedication in honor of my mother. She, we really appreciate she was here. And I'd just like to say, y'all, keep working. I know it's a rough battle. There's a lot of things y'all have to make, work in, but do your best you can, what you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight. Mr. Bill Meyer?
Okay, thank you so much for allowing us to talk about any subject. You'd be the first one. Did anybody do fireworks yesterday? It wasn't that cool, you couldn't see it because it was all cloudy and it was a big waste of time. Okay, over the years, these rules of council meetings have changed. This is all arbitrary, all these rules. You make them up whenever you want to, depends who's behind that wall there. And by the way, there never used to be a wall, we used to be in the same room together. Many things have changed over the years. The last, which you're basing all your rules on are this open meetings act, which is from 1977. They didn't even have cell phones then. And these are the rules we're using today. So they had to be revised, but they, I don't know, I don't think they've been revised. So it's up to you to decide what to do. So since I've lived here, the amount of time you can speak in a meeting changed so many times, it's ridiculous. So then it gets more cut down when people get fearful that the public's going to say something they don't like to hear, then they open it up and then their rules get along or whatever. So thank you so much for allowing us to speak about anything in the second round. I think you should know about your agenda was changed. You should know about your agenda's been changed about the reports at the end of your meeting. You've cut out half an hour of this meeting if you want to cut out these reports. We just added those like five years ago. And I'll tell you this, a little gossip how it started. You might know Robert Swolak, you know, who wasn't getting along very well with the mayor at the time. I mean, we confided about this and he says, how can we cut her down with the way she talks at these meetings and stuff like this? So why don't we expose what she's really doing? So why don't we have her give a report? Tell us what have you been doing for the last few weeks, you know? What I, we thought she wasn't doing anything. So they changed the rules and added the report from the mayor only. And then the mayor gave the report. And then after a while, it looked good for the mayor, and then all of a sudden she's telling all these things she's doing. So they exchanged, so all of a sudden they said, well, wait, we got to add everybody else so that they can have a report. So that's how it's gotten out of control. You're all giving reports, which you should talk about during the meeting. You don't need a report at the end. Say everything you have to say during the meeting. And if you forget, then at the end say, can I have a minute? I think you, I think she'll give you a minute.
That doesn't mean.
Maybe two minutes.
Chairman.
Anyways, Eid Mubarak to all the Muslim friends here in the city, by the way, which is 70, 80%, which most white community does not want to acknowledge. They still think it's like 50%. I don't know where they get that from. Check the role with all of the high schools and schools and the names and all that in the city and look around the city and walk around the whole city and see who lives here. Muslims are the largest percentage of Muslims in any city in the Western Hemisphere. So they have a voice here, a very powerful voice. We have to listen to them. And we have to find a way to live together, all communities. But understand, you guys have a large part.
I gave you your extra minute for you to ask me, because your conversation, your speech was a little exciting for me. Mubarak?
Good evening, council. I'm here to speak against resolution to limit email comments. I'm not sure how that went. I was busy doing some gardening work. Did it pass?
Yeah, well.
You ended it?
It limited to 15 emails.
Okay. 15 is not too bad, maybe, I don't know, if we come up with resolution next time, maybe 25, 30, maybe max. Because honestly, some people can't, some people can't make it down here, you know? I was able to take a break and put down my gardening tools. But if honestly, if I was doing my all-time favorite pastime of crocheting, I don't know if I would have put down those sewing needles. So, okay. But on another issue I want to speak of, I know a man, Mr. Tyrone Haynes, he's a barber, longtime resident too of Hamtramck. He left the city about a few years ago, started to open up his own business down south West Detroit, came back. And he has been very busy with his business. He actually renovated the building next door, opened it up and everything. And one of the things I was talking with him about was he still has issues with parking. So he's saying he can only park a limit four hours or so, but then he would have to stop, give him a haircut, and then go on and move his car. I mean, if they're paying, does it have, has to be a limit on the parking? I mean, if he's going to pay, he's paying. So I mean, if we can check that out, you know? It wouldn't be an interim council meeting without issue of parking, so we got to bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Jody, report?
Evening. As a local, I mean, I'm not, I haven't been a local that long, only about 10 years or so, so, you know, I'm still pretty new to the city compared to a lot of folks. But, you know, as somebody who is kind of part of the LGBT community and such, you know, y'all's timing probably could have been better. You said that it wasn't personal, you did it during Pride Month. I think it's kind of personal. So, yeah. Anyway, thanks for compromising on the email thing, though, that was, that's appreciated. I thought you were going to do 15 minutes instead of 15 emails, but, you know, 15 is 15, right? So, yeah, I'll make sure to have to get my emails in early. Then also, y'all are still going to, you're going to try and get the agendas out a little earlier for folks, I'm hoping. Didn't even realize how they were until they hit kind of last minute, I felt like. But anyway, just babbling. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Lisa Perkins?
So, Emily Quong? Eid Mubarak? Very happy to be here. I lived in Hamtramck, well, my name is Lisa Perkins, and I used to live in Hamtramck from 2007 to 2009, and I met some of you then. And so in that time, I was a doctoral student in anthropology from University of Texas at Austin, and I wanted to write my dissertation about Hamtramck. And at that, for those two years, the whole city of Hamtramck was my classroom, where I was trying to learn about Muslim-American civic engagement in the city. And the whole, the whole of the city had lessons to teach me, everyone I met had things to teach me. At this, you know, city hall, I would scribble all my notes and, you know, it was before a lot of technology, different technologies way back, so we were really reliant on, you know, doing a paper and pen and, you know. So that resulted in a book that I published in 2020. So yes, I worked on the book for 13 years. And, you know, so I owe my success to Hamtramck. And, you know, I'm thrilled to see how the city has grown. I'm still involved in Hamtramck, even though I moved away in 2009. I'm still a member of one Hamtramck LLC with Bill Meyer. And, you know, now we're working on the Yemen mural park and restoring the mural. And I'm very excited to keep, you know, being part of Hamtramck, even though I stay in Detroit when I'm, when I'm in the city now, I have a place there. And also live in Kalamazoo a half time. And I just wanted to commend you. I think that since 2009, the city has changed for the better in many, many ways. And I know that the ways that, you know, some of the parking meter issues and other things that we think have maybe changed for the worse, I know you guys are going to fix it. And I just wanted to congratulate you guys on the success of Eid Mubarak.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's all for the public comment.
So, no procession?
It's very difficult.
Yeah, I need a motion to a trial.
I motion again.
All right, 8:52.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.